I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure your cellphones are turned off or in vibrate position. This meeting of the Yezin City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Councilman. Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We do have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Tom McKenzie to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings you shower on us. Forgive us when we take those for granted. We ask you to watch over and help and direct our city leaders, also our state, county, and national leaders as they seek to deal with the unique challenges we have nowadays. We ask you to watch over our servicemen and women wherever they serve and help those that find the challenges of coming back to life after the military because that can be a difficult time for all of them. All these things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are you going? Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting on November the 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of November the 18th through the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business, we have none today. Nine, this is a time and place to advertise and conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance authorizing an economic development agreement with Development Company LLC for the River Trace project. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? John, you want to? That's our developer. If you don't know what River Trace is, that's the old Goodyear golf course.
I'm gonna put this plan here, I know you can't see it well, but if you'd like to, I can bring it around. It's a similar plan that's been shown to the city in the past. I'm John Abernathy with Blackwater Resources and representing the agenda item. What we're working on and what we've been working with the city on is a proposed retail project on the old River Trace golf course, our current River Trace golf course, which will hopefully be former when we're successful. We are proposing a project, a retail project there that's 180,000 square feet on about 28 acres, which will also include a larger out parcel that will be the home of the future Grissom Honda. It will be a relocation of their current dealership. And then there will be additional land behind that the landowner will keep of the golf course, probably another 70 acres or so.
Of the total of that, John, which, that 28 acres, can you point out here where it is?
It's black highlighted, if you can see that far, it's the black highlighted area.
Yeah, but where is the bottom, where is the whole golf course?
Is that, is that Megan Boulevard at the bottom?
This is Megan Boulevard here.
Okay, so you got some on Megan Boulevard.
Correct. The property, the property deviates a little bit from Megan when you get closer to Goodyear.
So it's on, it's on the Walmart side.
Correct.
And down to Megan, and then that cutout piece is where the.
There's two property owners.
I assume that's where the.
Yeah, there's two property owners on the cutout piece.
Automobile dealership will be.
Correct. One's automobile dealership that is, will be on the golf course property.
Is there any property on the, on the east side over there that, to get back to that property in the back?
Yeah, there's a, there's a road there.
Yeah, there'll be a road opposed at the traffic light where the current entrance to the golf course is.
Okay.
And that would go back and stub to the very end of the property and then end, and that would be the service road for the remainder of the property.
Okay.
It's going to entail old 789, really if you ever played that golf course, you're looking at 789. That's where it's gonna take you.
That's for the golfers.
Yeah. So this is the proposed boundary and, you know, we brought this before the city and I do want to start by saying thank you to, you know, the Commercial Development Authority that you have, which is, for a developer, it is a, it is a great thing. Typically, most cities do not have that. They may have an economic development position, but it's often geared towards industrial or just non-existent. So the fact that you have something set up there where we can see potential sites, we can have a liaison between different departments, I do want to commend you on that. And I do want to thank the mayor for our discussions, the staff, council, everybody's been, you know, very gracious. You've asked a lot of tough questions to get us to this point, but, you know, it's been very obvious that you're energetic about promoting development within the community and so want to thank you. What we're presenting today for this project is an agreement, that's a tax sharing agreement, where the, we as the developer would have the entire burden to bring the development here, pay for the development, bring the retailers, and open the shopping center. And if and when that is done, then the city is agreeing to share half, 50% of the sales taxes generated on it up to 15 years with a cap of 10 million. So that's the agreement in place, which for, which for us is, is what's gonna make this project viable for you and the city. It's, you know, a big commitment and at the same time, no upfront funding and no commitment unless we do what we say we're gonna do. So for both parties, we feel it's a win-win. And I saw an article today that I would just want to kind of bring out to you real quick. Just came out today, it's in Shopping Centers today, which in our world of retail development is kind of the magazine of the community. And it came out, came out yesterday, and what they say in here is that several years ago, there were 200 million square feet of development being done every year. So every year, 200, 200 million square feet. In 2010 and 2011 combined, 11 million square feet were started. So 5%, of several years ago, that's how much is being started. For next year, or currently constructing for next year, they believe 5 million square feet will actually finish. And they had 15 projects listed across the entire United States. Five of them, five of the 10 were smaller than what we're proposing here. So 10 projects in the entire United States of the size that we're proposing in Gadsden. So you can see the undertaking, you know, that we're, that we're working on here and the advantage of this and the need for the city to join in with us to do this. There are a lot of grocery anchor developments done, a lot of drugstores, but projects that are of this size, this would be, you know, certainly in the top, you know, 1% of projects that are being done. There are just very few being done at all. So this was a big undertaking, so I appreciate your consideration of this. I think it's exciting. The retailers are considering Gadsden and we're bringing it for you today because we have a major retailer that's interested that has signed a non-binding but written agreement to come here, and they're bringing it before their committee. And part of their requirements is to have this agreement in place so they are sure that there's an adequate deal in place for them to consider. They're only doing a certain amount of stores a year in the country, so they don't want to commit to something that they don't feel is gonna be viable. So that's why we're here for you today. Thank you.
John.
Oh, excuse me.
I was just gonna ask, what is the potential of jobs, of creation there?
We were estimating as many as 500 jobs across the center.
The total amount of the layout?
The total amount across the entire project.
Right.
180,000 feet, about 500 jobs. The largest retailers can, can have between 75 and 125 jobs themselves. And then there's seasonal jobs above that that's not factored in.
What I want you to mention, it's a $30 million project.
It is, it is. The layout that we've done here estimates about a $30 million investment, construction cost in the project. And the revenues are estimated to be about 30 million as well.
You answered my question, when, I was gonna say what the potential is for the jobs are concerned, so about 500 or so, you said?
Yeah, about, we're estimating about 500. I mean, when you, when you think about restaurants as well, I mean, they, they employ a good many people, you know, you can have a large sit-down employ 60 to 80 people.
Right.
You know, in a large soft goods retailer, clothing, you can employ 75 to 125 as well. And then they hire a good many seasonal, 25 to 50 in the seasonal months, same Thanksgiving to New Year's.
Well, we excited about it and hopefully everything's gonna work out, so we appreciate you.
There is it?
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to ask a question?
I'd like to ask a question.
Actually, we still got the public hearing going on.
Yeah, we still got a public hearing going on.
Yeah.
Does anyone else like, would like to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to it?
Is anyone got a question? I think he has a question. I don't know what his question is.
I just have a question.
It's a public hearing, can?
You need to come to the mic, please.
Okay.
I was just wanting to ask.
Can I get your name and address, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Give you your address.
I'll need it for the record.
Okay, Gary Young, I live in Hoax Bluff, Alabama, and I've been associated with River Trace Golf Course. And I was just wanting to ask the gentleman if he had a timeline of when this project might start, when it might begin, and when it might be completed.
Amen.
Okay, thank you.
We're proposing, I'll wait till you, so you can listen. We're proposing the project start in June of next year, you know, whether we're a month or two early, a month or two later, June is our target date to start. And October next year is when it would, 13, 2013, is when it would open. We understand there's an operating golf course there, we're sensitive to that, we have, you know, agreements with the landowner underlying the golf course, and we're gonna give proper notice so that it's, it won't be a sudden thing. We're gonna give proper notice, so, so anything that needs to be handled can be handled.
So you say June of next year is your projected starting date?
Correct.
Give or take?
Correct.
HM, you want to come to the microphone, please?
My name's HM Freeman, I'd just like to speak in behalf of these people that's supposed to come to this Blackwater development over there. I own the little Freeman Plaza on this end of your place over there, and I'd like to speak in support of it because the more stuff that we can get over there in Gadsden, the better off we all are. And I hope this plan that they got will come through. And my question, I guess, would be, would they tie that to the Acousa Town Center in any way? The road that separates them there?
As I understand it, the road on, the road coming in, I believe it's 5th, is a public road, and so we would, we would tie into that just before the Walmart parking lot. However, we would have to get an agreement from Walmart to tie into the Acousa Town Center, which will be a difficult task to do.
Would be a difficult task.
Unless we can provide some incentive to them to do so.
Well, I wondered about that.
But we will certainly attach where the public road is prior to the parking lot.
Yeah.
And there's an elevation difference between the golf course and the Walmart, which, which would have to be overcome as well. The front road in front of Walmart has a power pole and a retaining wall.
I noticed.
Direct in front of it, too. So there's some challenges there, but getting Walmart's approval would probably be the biggest challenge.
Well, you answered my question, but I hope that it does come to fruition. We're in Alabama, thank you.
Yeah, you can.
I'd just like to let everybody know that they sort of have a timeline, and anybody who plays a lot of golf at River Trace, Twin Bridges is really starting to lower our prices and offer some, some good deals and some twilight deals and some family packages.
He said you can make a statement, not a commercial.
And we're gonna, we're gonna be filling in some sand traps and clear some undergrowth so when you lose a ball, you know, you can get back there and get it and take it again. But we just want everybody to keep that in mind, that we're gonna have some different things up there coming in the months.
And that's another effort to promote the city of Gadsden, just like this new facility coming to Gadsden over here at the River Trace. We're all excited about it. We're all very excited about it. And Mayor, thank you for reminding them that, you know, there is another alternative.
Okay, is there any other questions or, okay. This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, the council.
Mr. President, at this time, I'm gonna ask for unanimous consent to consider it today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, now I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, he did mention there is a timeline with one of the tenants, and I think that timeline is around the 1st of December or so, so we wanted to go ahead on and get this agreement in so they can move forward with the project.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement and use of on property located at 813 South 6th Street in District 5. Randall R. Gammon, Kathy L. Gammon, and Regent's Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. Based on impressions of this property in recent days, we're asking today for the case to be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, is, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition, anyone?
We've been upstaged.
Didn't mean to make everybody mad.
Yeah, we just got upstaged by something better.
Mr. President, make a motion, we table this for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Titan Mart located at 2511 South 11th Street. This is for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next three resolutions have to do with the Twin Bridges Golf Course, which, and number one is awarding bid number 3182 for a heavy-duty mowing deck. And 3183 is for a riding fairway mower, and 84 is for a riding greens mower. All of these are recommended, awarding the bid to Greenwell Turf and Tractor.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve all three.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three resolutions.
16 and 17 are awarding bid number 3187 and 3188 for finished traffic signs, awarding the bid to Vulcan Incorporated, and unfinished, 3188 is unfinished traffic signs and signposts to Vulcan.
Mr. President, I think you missed number 15.
Yeah, but I'll go ahead and make a motion, we approve those two.
Go back to 15.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve those two.
Second.
Go together.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, 16 and 17, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3186 to for concrete sidewalk and curb and gutter. The NEAPA coordinator is recommending a warning to bid to James Watts and Sons and Contractor in the amount of $19,0325. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items 18 through 24 are resolutions authorizing public hearings on various codes, including building, existing building, electrical, fuel, gas, mechanical, plumbing, and residential. Copies of the codes will be on file in the city clerk's office for use and examination by the public. The public hearings will be held during the regular council meeting on December the 27th at 11:00 a.m. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all seven resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, probably not at this point in time. Anyway, we're gonna have the public hearings, but I do want, and I didn't mention it upstairs, I think, where's Brian, oh, he's still here. Do this deal with the situation about homeowners doing electrical work, plumbing work? I think we talked about that once before.
That's not involved in this. This is just the international codes and the National Liberal Code.
Okay.
The adoption of the latest additions. The item you're referring to is still pending, but moving towards the city council hearing will probably take place along the same timelines that the public hearing for these codes.
Was there something going along on the state level, too? Was there something the legislature was trying to do or deal with this on?
There, there was a change in state legislature that we were not aware of that happened in February of this year. So have been some changes there, we will address those at the appropriate time.
Okay, I was intending to mention that upstairs, but anyway.
Brian, has the league, have they been involved in any of that? Have you heard any feedback from the league about any of those kind of changes?
Yeah. These or the?
No, the, the one on the state.
The other, we have been in contact with, with the attorneys, I believe, who represent the league.
Yeah.
They're aware of it. I don't want to say we were all caught off guard, but I don't think anybody was expecting it.
Yeah, the reason I was asking, they have two lobbyists.
I'm not sure where they were. They were, it was being proposed, but.
I know of some other things in the last couple of years that were stopped by one of our local legislators, and nobody knows about it.
Unfortunately, this is already passed, so what we would do, you know, to reverse what's taking place would, would have to, you know, they'd have to draft new legislation.
And I was, and I was.
You know, that was done before we knew it happened, so.
And our state and local, I serve on the state and local legislative committee for the league, and that did come up in our meeting. And they are working, that's why I brought it up, they're working on some, some legislation and stuff.
Yeah, there were a couple of things about two years ago that was going through and nobody even knew about, I don't know where their lobbyists were.
Well, they, they were there, it's just that, again, you know, when you introduce legislation at the 12th hour, and I mean the 12th hour, when you see it at the 11th hour, it doesn't have it in there, but when it come up for a vote at the 12th hour, they slip something else in, and people vote for it, and I think that's what happened in this situation.
Yeah. Okay.
Of course, we don't do nothing like that here, but.
Oh, of course, nah.
Yeah, we'll read it later, yeah.
Close, well spoken.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all seven resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all seven.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have a, I have a resolution that I would like to present today for unanimous consent to consider, authorizing agreement with the county for funding Stroud Avenue Drainage Project Phase 1.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a project that it may not be the first time that it's happened in the city of Gadsden, but I can assure you that it is a rare occasion where we have your city and county working together on a project that has been put off for years. The drainage on Stroud Avenue is going to be completed, and it's gonna be done with funds from the city council and from county commissioners who are working together to make sure this project is completed. So I look forward to this project getting started and completed. After we finish Phase 1, then we will do Phase 2, which will back us up further on Stroud Avenue. But we intend to resolve the drainage problem that they've had on Stroud Avenue there for centuries, so thank you for your consideration.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committee board, Shane.
I'm speaking on behalf of Kerry Payne with Parks and Rec and Kay Moore as well. They both had announcements and weren't able to be here. Got a lot going on this Friday downtown Gadsden and here at City Hall. At the North Pole Stroll will begin at 5:00 at the Pittman Theater, that's where everybody comes dressed up. I thought it was just Santa Claus, but evidently anything Christmas related, so there's no idea what you'll, you'll see this Friday. They meet at 5:00 at the Pittman Theater and then begin their march towards City Hall here in the front lawn at 5:15, so be looking for that. Of course, the streets will be closed for First Friday anyway, so they'll be able to continue uninterrupted. And then, so they'll arrive here about 5:30 and the, the tree lighting ceremony will begin. And at that point, I think the city choir will be singing, and Iva may have a solo, I'm not sure she knows that or not. Refreshments will be sold, and then there will be a, evidently a door prize, $50 door prize drawn for the people that compete in the North Pole Stroll contest, so it'll, it'll be a big evening, and then everybody will light, the mayor will light the tree, and we'll adjourn to downtown Gadsden for First Friday. So I hope everyone, everyone can come out in a team.
Been some questions about, is First Friday gonna be during the winter, or is it gonna stop sometime?
I don't know if they've made that decision, if anybody else can answer or chime in, but I.
I would think probably Kay will need to address it, but I think probably for the colder months, it'll stop for two or three months till it starts warming up again after this.
Okay.
I guess, but Kay can.
I think last year, they stopped in January. I'm not sure when they resumed, but I think they stopped in.
Unless it falls on New Year's Eve, it's really not a, you know, a big, thank you.
I understand that in the past, they have kind of discouraged bringing pets downtown because it's a little hot in the summertime and there's not any water for them. But anyway, and this one, I understand that they encouraging you to bring your pets and make a reindeer out of your dog or whatever you want to do. Is that correct?
I can neither confirm nor deny.
I read that in the Gadsden Times, so it has to be true.
It was in the paper. Yeah, it, it's true then.
But Bill, that lack of water isn't the only reason they don't want them downtown.
Remarks by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
If my voice is shaking, it's because I'm about to freeze, Ben. How y'all doing?
Me, too. Let's get, get on with it.
Well, real quick, I, I do want to commend our chief, Roy Harbin, in the manner that the police force is coming together. I've never seen such a change in attitude, morale, the way they're carrying on their responsibilities, and I just, I want to introduce this morning Commander Faye Gary. Good morning, Faye. Good to have you here, absolutely. Things are changing in the police department, Mayor. All for the plus, yeah. I was down there yesterday, I felt real good about being there, stepping, so walking down through that winter, it wasn't going to hit me then. Everything's working out good. And I do want to say this morning to a really old friend of mine, Sally Norris. Sally lives on Dozier Street in Alabama City. Sally and I go way back. I heard that she was a little bit under the weather, and I wanted to know this morning that we're all hoping and pulling for her, and you get better, Sally. We appreciate you. That's all I have.
Johnny?
I'd just like to remind everyone about Santa Claus, the gazebo in Alabama City will be the ninth and tenth, and seventeenth and eighteenth of December, you can come, bring your pictures, your cameras, you can get your picture made with Santa Claus, it's free, there'll be hot chocolate, a bunch of candy for all the kids, it'll be a real safe environment to come down there to get with Santa Claus. And I did want to say our heart, our prayers and our thoughts go out to the Jonathan Hopper family, who was a friend of mine, he passed away Friday night, and he truly will be missed. That's all we got.
I would like to announce we're going to have a district or a neighborhood meeting tonight at five o'clock. We're going to be meeting at the Etowah Baptist Association Building there on Walnut Street, so everybody in District Five that have a lot on their mind, come on out tonight, we're going to meet at five thirty at the Baptist Association Building there on Walnut Street.
Just want to give an update and do a commercial. Update on the, my granddaughter and that basketball team, they're still undefeated, they just, they played again last night, and she's doing great, so we're excited about that. My grandson, them football team, he plays at Tennessee Tech, they were in the Division Two-A playoffs, and of course, they lost on Saturday, so they're out of it now, but at least they, they are the Ohio Valley Conference champs. So, just want to give an update on that and do a commercial for them.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I have is, well, I've got two things. Being mentioned, Police Chief and Commander Gary, we're glad to have those people so cooperative with us. You know, I, I had a question this morning, well, we had a situation this morning that was addressed, and I'll tell you, it was the crossing guard, you know, over on East, at Donahue Elementary School, and it seems that, you know, we're just not getting, we haven't gotten, I should say, the, the support that we need to slow the traffic down over there and to, and to get the flow of traffic to move in as it should while people pick up their children. And that was presented to the, that was presented to the chief this morning, and the answer was, we've got the answer, we've got the solution to that. Now, you know, that's been a long time since she presented the problem to someone, they come to you and say, I got, we've got the solution to it, so it's very encouraging and very good to hear that cooperation. The only other thing that I have is that, you know, that was a beautiful event last Thursday at the convention hall where they had the community Thanksgiving dinner. There were lots of people there, a lot of people were fed over at Etowah County, and the volunteers just had themselves a good time, they were very much appreciated, and if you are in the area next year, they will have another one next year, and I, I invite you to go out and, and look at the events that are going on and congratulate those people who are volunteering their time for this event. Oh, and I, I, that was a lady, that was a bus coming through from California, and two ladies in wheelchairs heard about this community dinner, and that, they parked that bus down in, in, in the parking lot down there, got in the wheelchair and came up and volunteered at this event. They were there for four hours in wheelchairs, heard about it, and came and, and volunteered. So, you know, man, that, that is a spirit that we can all use. That's a spirit that we can all use, thank you.
Mayor?
First of all, I'd like to follow up on what Billy said about volunteers. We have, I think First Methodist Downtown, I've told you this before, has adopted stripling, and we sure to do some mentoring, they had a pizza party for the A and B Honor Roll a couple of weeks ago, and they're volunteering in other ways to help the school, and we sure would like to get some more churches to look into any elementary schools or middle schools in your area, if you have some people who want to go mentor, help with a little reading, a couple of hours a week, or anything you might want to do to adopt a school, we could really use that. Also, on the police department, I've had a lot of calls from residents about how nice some of our offers are, they've changed flats, a lady had a problem and stood out in the rain and helped her out with an issue on her car, and, and a lot of the, the special projects team, they're working in a lot of areas, and you don't see them, but they're getting a lot of results when we have a problem in certain areas, so I, I appreciate, too, the cooperation from everybody down there and the attitude. And we also with the development, we're, we're, we're pretty fortunate right now, there's a lot of places, there's nothing happening, and we're getting some hits for some other commercial development things, don't know if it'll happen or not, but if it does, we'll sure talk about it pretty quick, but there's some things floating around, and we hope to tie one or two of them down here in the next sixty days, so we'll see how that goes, as well as, we, we've also got some industrial, we've got an industrial prospect or two looking around, and Intiva is, is having an expansion out there for some more jobs, so we're really fortunate in this situation here to, to be getting what we're getting. Also, I want to brag on the council, you know, they've been here just a little over a year, and we got a few new ones, and some of the older ones has been here for a long time, and I appreciate the cooperation we get from them. We have a good, good working relationship, you know, sometimes they sort of yawn at a little bit with each other, but it's mostly in fun, and they always get friendly when they go out to eat every day after council meeting, but I appreciate all the cooperation they do and, and to get things done, that's what we've got to keep doing, so thank you, guys.
Iva?
Councilman Derek Williams was not here today, and he asked me to make an announcement about his upcoming meeting. It's a District Two community meeting, and it's scheduled for Saturday, December the tenth at nine thirty a.m., and the location is the East Gadsden Community Center, so please make your plans to attend that meeting. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.